Eric Jones?
Yes.
March?
Sam Bowden?
Here.
Approval or corrections to the minutes of the March 12, 2018 Regular Village Board Meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Jones, second by trustee Bowden.
Jones?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
And President Cross?
Yes. Accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending 3/10/18, amount of $43,480.61. General fund, $37,883.25. Water and sewer fund, $13,578.82. Giving a total of $51,462.07. Are there any questions on any of the bills? If not, a motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Jones, second by trustee Bowden to pay the bills and the payroll.
Jones?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
President Cross?
Yes. Public comment and/or questions on any non-agenda item? Yes, sir?
My name is Andy Bennett and I live on 524 West Corning, sort of by the little windmill. And the reason I'm here tonight, I'd like to see if the village can help me solve a water problem that I have in my yard. And what's happening is the park, the pond is backfeeding when we get heavy rains. And I've literally got fish in my yard. But I'd like to see if the village could help maybe put a bypass from behind my house where the line comes in that's backfeeding. Because the water's naturally coming up and geysering out of the storms who are behind my house and going to the front of my house and draining into that sewer. And if they could put the bypass in, I think it would solve my problem. And when this happens, I also get water coming in my windows to my basement. So I've been dealing with this since '06, since I bought the house. I'm in a little area there. But I built up around my property, I put four truckloads of dirt the first year I was in and raised my property level 12 to 18 inches at my house to kind of conquer this problem. I'm pumping all my groundwater away, but I can't stop it from coming in my windows. And that's, it mainly happens when we have really heavy rains. And I'd like to see if we could do something to solve this problem. Because the frequency of the heavy rains, the ice and snow, when we get that, it's obviously expensive to fix your finished basement all the time. And I've already, when we had the first flood back in, I forgot what year, I had FEMA actually cover my furnace and some other things. My insurance is expensive and it all stems from this issue where I got a river running through my yard where you could probably canoe through it. So...
Because I know that you and I have talked-
Yes, sir.
And Bob has been over there and met with you. And my understanding is there's a swale-
Correct.
-that runs between your house and your neighbor's house. And from what Bob explained to me, the swale was, I mean, it's actually there to carry this-
The water away.
-water away.
But it-
To carry it to Corning to get it to the storm sewer on Corning Avenue.
Right. But the problem is there's so much water. I mean, the one time I literally was geyzing like six feet out of the pipe behind me. So, they have that in your yard, plus all my neighbor's tree, he's got pine trees, so all the pine needles, everything, all his crap is strewn about my yard. Plus it stinks. You know, it sucks having, you know, I didn't sign up to have my basement flooded all the time. So, and that's kind of why I'm here too. I'm frustrated because it's, the frequency is more with these heavy rain patterns and everything else. And I've been living with it for a long time. And the other issue that may be a problem in the future, one of the main sewer lines behind my house, because there's all this water there, I think maybe leaching because I'm seeing air bubbles coming up from the-
The storm sewer?
No, sewer sewer.
Sewer sewer.
Where it's taking water on because there's all this water sitting there and you're seeing bubbles coming up from that sewer. So that tells me there's air in there and it's taking water on. I have no way to tell, but I see that. I could show the individual who will come see it.
Check that public works.
Well, yeah, and I was gonna say maybe Troy, if you want to talk to Bob-
Yeah.
Okay, then maybe, you know, we can run this back to the committee and let's-
Did Bob say what the fix was?
No, I think Bob basically told Andy to come here and talk to the board.
Exactly.
And-
You know, I realize it costs money, but I'm just, to the point where I'm really frustrated and I don't want to get to my insurance company where they're gonna drop me and not cover me anymore because this is a recurring issue that keeps happening. And short of, you know, my house is literally like a fishbowl trying to keep the water out. I put an earthen dam around my house, you know, I've raised it, you know, and it's not cheap to put four truckloads of dirt and then re-escalate and all that stuff.
Does the neighbor, does the neighbor get any of this water?
He doesn't have his, no problem, but he's hired them. Okay, but he, I'm surprised, he said he was gonna come tonight, but he would basically confirm what I'm saying. And he's the one that actually gave me the idea of doing the bypass to connect it from there instead of it running up out of the storm sewer and in my yard and flowing to the front of my house where the drain is. If they put the bypass in, it would slowly just take it away and it would never go through my yard. And that would be ideal because I don't like a cesspool of mosquitoes and all that in the summer as well. Plus all the crap I gotta clean up when this happens, like fish and stuff from the pond. But, you know, I've just been battling this and I'm pretty frustrated. I'd like to get something accomplished. And I realize it's gonna cost some money, but I, you know, I'm just, I gotta finish basement and I don't like the fact that every time it rains, I gotta run down there and check to make sure. Plus I have three sump pumps in one pit right now just to keep up and a backup.
Is your house a new home?
No.
Or relatively new home?
It's, was built in '84. It's one of the sub, in the, the first subdivision, that ratchett built, that's right by the-
It faces Corning Avenue.
Right.
So you're on the south side of Corning?
Correct.
And is the pond in, behind your house?
The way this works, this pipe comes from the pond somehow and it's supposed to drain to the pond, but what happened when the water level gets so high, it backfeeds in my, through my yard. It come, literally is geysering out of the pipe sometimes.
The ponds don't like the black-
Is your house a foot length?
No.
And are you talking about-
Not supposed to be, but it is now.
The, a bypass sewer to go from backyard to Corning?
What I'm suggesting, I should say, is if that storm sewer had a bypass to go at a higher level before the top of the grate and ran to the front of my house where drains are ready, instead of going through my yard and in my basement, I'd like to see that happen. But, and it could be done, but the other problem too, and I think there's something to this, with seeing air bubbles like that with the sanitary sewer, and I know you guys have exponential problems with a lot of water. You're treating, I think that's part of your problem is you're treating all the water that's leaching into that.
Well, and we, there's always been a program of, you know, televising these sewers, you know, looking for infiltration because you don't want to, obviously don't want to-
And in my front yard too, I, I've noticed over the years when I put all that dirt in there, I think the front one may be leaching as well because I'm getting spots that are sinking, sunk around there. And, you know, it's, there's a lot of stuff going on there. It's older home, it's eighty, was built in '84. But, and I kind of think maybe it wasn't done quote correctly and that's probably why I'm battling this. And it was never engineered for the weather we are dealing with consistently now. And that, that's another problem. But, you know, I just, I'd like to see something done. If I, if it can be done, I'd really appreciate it, you know.
So, yeah, we'll have the village engineer talk with Bob and-
You said 524?
Yeah.
West Corning?
And, you know, I got a storm sewer right in front of my house and that's where it all goes. And if that gets back though, which has happened, I get water all the way up to my garage, literally. You know, and at one time when it got plugged up internally, I had literally, it flooded the sewer, storm, regular sanitary sewer, where I had to plug my toilets because it was coming up my toilets in my house. That sucks.
Yep.
But I knew there was something going on. When I get water up to my driveway, you know, on my driveway and near my garage, I know right away, go do that because it's gonna come in the house. So, but at that time, when it happened, that's when Tom Vlog worked there, the pipe in front of me got blocked and that's what happened. They cleaned it out, solved the problem. And the other thing which is interconnected to this, this creek that's part of the pond, when it gets full of debris and plugs up, that makes it back by, come up by my house too because it slows the flow. So, it's, it's a bigger issue than, you know, and it partly could be an engineering thing where maybe the pipe volume isn't big enough. I don't know. You know, it's, somebody's gotta run the numbers, you know. But when Tom had dug out that creek before that's between the pond, that seemed to help a lot. But I don't know who owns that property, if that is the village or not.
The creek, no, it's not. What did we decide that was? That was-
Park District.
Park District, I believe.
Is it?
Yeah.
When, he supposedly did that, it seemed to help. I didn't have the problem as frequent, but now it's doing it again. And the other thing too is I'd really like to do something different with behind me because it sucks going through my yard.
Well, we'll have Troy talk about it. And then Mike, your next Public Works Committee meeting, that next Thursday, maybe you guys can kind of talk about that and have something to bring back to the board.
Do you have any kind of projected cost of what it would be to repair that?
No idea. I'm not an excavator.
I just thought maybe you'd talk to him.
No.
What was your name again?
Andy. My last name's Bennett. I've lived there twenty years. Not at that house, but altogether, but I've been here a while now. So, but, you know, I always knew I had problems with water at the previous house and it was always a money issue. And there, what I ended up doing is, I lived behind Terry's and when they dumped those houses, they just cut the field tiles and then rerouted them to the storm sewer. I literally found a tile myself and dug it and hooked it up to the storm sewer like it was supposed to. But I had to get an old farmer to come out there and-
Yeah.
-find the damn thing and then I did it myself because I was fed up with, and actually because they kept on, well, we don't have no money to do that, this and that, you know. But it was like 600 bucks a pipe and a lot of hard work and I had it done. But this one here, because it's not my pipe, I can't just go do it. And I'm sure someone would have it objection, being in the village. There I was kind of rural a little bit where, and my neighbors weren't gonna complain because they were fighting a same problem. So, but, you know, long story short, you know, if we can do something, that'd be great.
We'll definitely take a look at it.
Yeah. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you for your time.
No problem.
And I do see the improvements you guys are making.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comment for non-agenda items? We'll go on to reports of committees, no police chief's report tonight, engineers report.
I don't have anything new since the last meeting.
Seen whether we're doing some polls around 50 today?
Yeah, there's, there's, were they moving polls today?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good because that's one of the major hurdles to get going with it, is getting those polls moved, committees to get those moved. And then AT&T and Comcast have to hook onto the polls once they're moved.
Okay.
And then the contractor, Iroquois, will start the actual construction of the project.
Good.
Hopefully.
So that project's just waiting for utilities?
Pretty much now, yeah.
And the utilities have been working, I mean-
Yeah. You've seen equity out there.
Pretty consistently.
But it's, states all done, funding's all done, all that stuff.
Funding's all set, all the-
Contract respect, it's just, we're started.
Just getting those polls moved is the main thing.
All right.
Good. No old business, we move into new business. Item A, approve 2018-2019 budget. So this is coming back out of AOC. We have the proposed 2018-2019 budget. Our budget year starts on April the 1st. So this is the budget.
And the budget.
The budget.
Everybody should have got it.
Yeah, everyone's got a copy of the budget. Are there any questions, comments, discussion? If not, I guess I need a motion to adopt, approve the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Bowden.
Moravka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
President Cross?
Yes. Item B, special event request number one, game on Ball Grill, 115 North Second Street. Bike run April the 29th, 2018.
That's me. So we applied for this last year, it was proved it, it rained, it never happened. If, if weather permits, it could be up to 300 bikes. I'm requesting that, I would like to bring them in down Railroad Street. If we could have the street sweepers go through the day before to clean up any gravel and his motorcycles, to encourage them to park in the back. A lot of bikers smoke, they tend to smoke where their bike is. So if we allow them parking in front, they're gonna go out and smoke in front, which we don't want. So I'm requesting to have North blocked off so that we can bring them in down Railroad Street and have all that bike parking back there. Obviously we'll police it, make sure everybody stays out back in the beer garden with any alcohol. They're anticipated, they leave Frankfurt at 11:00, so we're guessing around us by 11:30. And they usually hang out hour, hour and a half. We will have stragglers throughout the day, I've heard guys do it backwards, so it's not like everyone's gonna be gone at 1 o'clock and, you know, we will have stragglers throughout the day. I don't think we need to keep the street closed for that. If they park in front throughout the day, it'll be small enough, manageable, you know, a lot of people.
So we're talking about closing Railroad from North to Main Street?
I'd like the chief's input on it. If he thinks that that would be better, we can do that. I was just more concerned about blocking off North so that when they come, because they're gonna come over the tracks on Crawford-
Okay.
And then we'll have someone directing them to turn down Railroad and then go right into the parking. I don't want them to have an option to turn down North and park in the front.
Right. But, but I'd like to see Main Street, you know, blocked off too, just so we don't have other traffic-
So no cars and then, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, coming in that way.
Yeah.
To me that makes the most sense.
Yes, yes.
So you'd block off Main and North?
Well, correct. And then they would just come in there, yes.
For like in two hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, from like 11, I'm saying like 11 to 1:00. Mostly it's getting them there. Once they're there, if they want to go out this way or that way, I don't, you know, because they're on their way.
And they can go out the Main Street way, I just don't want traffic coming-
In, yes, traffic.
Yeah.
Right.
And I talked to chief today and, you know-
Yeah, and it's, it's an older motorcycle crowd, it's not the young guys. They are all right hardly, so it is gonna, you know, there's gonna be 300 bikes showing up, it's gonna be loud while they pull up. But they're a good group of guys. I mean, they do all their work for the veterans.
I was gonna say, what is this for? It's a veteran, it's a veteran?
It's, yeah, it's the Ridgewood Club out of Ryans and Frankfurt.
Okay.
And it's their club run or whatever, and I think they do something for the veterans with it or something.
Any questions, discussion? So if not a motion to approve the special event tournament application for Sunday, April the 29th, starting at approximately noon, we'll be closing Railroad Street from Main Street, that back to North, not to North, yeah, by 11:30.
And it's only taken some about 15 minutes.
And then also blocking off North Street coming onto Railroad Street.
Correct. Yeah, I don't want to give them the option to park in front.
I'm motioning.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Bowden?
Yes.
President Cross?
Yes. Item two, Piaton Chamber of Commerce Downtown Area Block Party during the 22nd and 23rd with street closures. We have two items. Item A is a one-day liquor license.
Do we address that first?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Well, basically, we'd like to have a summer event downtown, again this year like we did last year. This one's gonna be a little bit different because there haven't, there aren't any carnivals available. So there's not gonna be any carnival rides or that. That's why it's only two days, or a day and a half really, and not a full weekend. So Friday night is basically just gonna be whatever, a beer tent, entertainment tent with a band and maybe like a solo performer, wrap it up, stop the music at 10:30 and be out of there by 11:00. That way I'll minimize as much as we can inconveniences to noise. So with that, we'd like to, the liquor license part of it is to have the two trailers again.
Where are you putting the tent at?
Main, like Frank last year, on Main and Second, I believe facing, facing West again. That worked out pretty good, it kind of kept every, everything down to that. And also on Saturday, All Automotive has volunteered to do a car show again, which works really well on Main Street from All Automotive, basically to in front of the restaurant here place.
On Saturday, be Saturday afternoon?
Probably midday start. I don't know what time they'll start lining up, 11-ish, 12?
Yeah, I'm not sure on the time.
Our, our first event that day would be a beanbag tournament, when that would start at 1:00. And then there's gonna be children's activities more on the north side of our event, which would be basically at North and Second Street.
I know Chief and I had had a conversation, I mean, one of the other things, you gotta kind of figure out the logistics with the porta potties. So they're not up on the sidewalks, you know, we gotta figure out a better place to-
Yeah, we want, our main goal there was to keep the smell and atmosphere of a porta potty as far away from the people that are hanging out there as possible. We could make something work, it just-
So there will be a lot less of them, there will only be four or five?
Okay.
Total.
In the beer tent.
In the beer tent?
Yeah.
So, the quantity of those will go down, we, we can do some arrangement.
But we'll, we'll figure out the logistics on that.
But basically, the goal is to keep it as presentable of an area as, as possible.
So, all right, well, let's deal with the liquor license first.
Okay.
So you're looking for the time of your tent. On here it says Friday 6 to 11:00 and Saturday 11:00 to 11:00 for the liquor license.
Yeah, well, the hours-
We were, we were talking a little bit during our committee, the whole meeting. Personally, I mean, I would prefer to see a 10 o'clock stop time just because we do have people that live downtown, you know, they live above in those apartments. And if we, if we stop at 10:00, we got a better shot at-
We got them all off by 11:00 sharp last year. It's always, it stops at 10:30. It's, we're just working with a very limited amount of time and a ton of work getting that all set up and a ton of cost to bring in the tent, the barricades, the bands, sound systems, the lights, porta potties, food vendors. And an extra half an hour, especially during the prime time, is pretty important to our bottom line. We're gonna try to run a little bit more efficiently this year so we make some more profit. Last year we made just a little bit. So that extra half an hour really, really does make it a pretty big difference. And I don't, we didn't have any issues at all last year and the noise really isn't, isn't too terribly much, I don't think.
Our main concern isn't to have them cleaned out by 11:00. So if they cut off at 10:00 and out by 11:00, or if they guarantee us, cut it off at 10:30 and be out by 11:00.
That's, I mean, that's up to the board and I, I did talk with chief about it and he was, he was okay, but I mean, I definitely want it, it needs to be cleared out by 11:00.
Yeah, I don't, I prefer that. It minimizes our chance for any bad things to happen. Get to a point in it.
Just saying you cut off liquor sales at 10:30?
10:30.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest.
Yeah, ban, stop at 10:30 sharp. Liquor sales 10:30. And, yeah, don't mess around with that. I mean, it's, what is done is done and they can go to another location or make it home safe.
Yeah, I have to go home, but we can't stay here.
What time does it start?
So we said 6 o'clock on Friday?
That time may vary, we're not positive on that.
Yeah, I would say somewhere between 5:00.
Earlier by the 6:00.
Not, not earlier than 5:00.
No.
100%. Entertainment, a band probably, or somebody playing live music probably wouldn't start till 6:00 at the earliest. You may have a, not a DJ, but an iPod or something playing for that hour. We just haven't quite firmed it up yet. And I don't know if it really makes that big of a difference if we start at 5:00, start at 6:00, it definitely will not be before 5:00.
So we have a one day, actually a two-day liquor license. So it'd be Friday, June 22nd, starting not earlier than 5:00 with sales definitively ending at 10:30. And then Saturday, you've got 11:00 AM-
You put, you put 12 on there.
Let's put noon.
Yeah.
Starting at noon and ending definitively at 10:30 on the 23rd.
Need a motion on that?
Yes.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Jones.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Moravka?
Yes.
President Cross?
Yes. All right, so we got an amplifier permit for those two days also. Again, I would say the same times. So Friday, starting though earlier than 5:00, ending at 10:30. And Saturday noon, ending at 10:30. And then this is where, I guess we have the street closures in here too. So we're looking at closing?
Main Street from First to Railroad. Second Street from Main through North Street. We're not gonna go all the way probably down to the bowling alley. I guess that's about a half a block.
Because I know last year we had an issue with the gentleman that owns that apartment building down by the dentist that, he said he was never notified and we had him-
I don't think we're gonna go quite down that far. Well, our, basically our, our children's activities, inflatable slides and bounce houses, a little bit smaller, nothing like 70-foot carnival rides that have lights and noise and trucks and all that stuff, so. And that's gonna, what time is that gonna end at?
That's only on Saturday?
It's only on Saturday.
It will end anywhere between 8:00 and 9:00.
So it's not gonna go quite as late, the noise need to be, it should be much less. And we'll do everything we can to keep, I don't think we're gonna go down that far. I think we'll probably maybe make it to Compass, just depending how.
But I mean, just anybody, any resident, you know, any residential property that's going to be affected, they need to be communicated with.
Yeah.
I mean, that's-
I don't know how far west on North Street we would go, if at all. And then North Street in front of the Legion, North Street to Railroad, I think the Legion probably want that closed off.
So what times are you talking about closing the streets? So it'd be Friday?
I would have to talk with the tent people. Uh, we'd have to talk with the tent people.
Okay.
They will, only the tent and that area will be closed off on Friday because we won't have the car show and we won't have the kids' activities, so only that area, so people will be, yeah. We will have some food vendors and stuff on Second, but Main will be open up and, up till to the beer tent. And then, so that would depend on when the tent gets set up there, Saturday, it will be first thing in the morning till.
So the tent's not going up until Saturday, we're not putting?
No, the tent's not, Friday morning.
Okay.
And I spoke with the tent people, they said they can take it down on Sunday and all of the blowups on Saturday, they will come out Saturday night and take them as well.
So the tent will come down on Sunday morning?
Yes.
And the porta potties will get out of there?
Yeah, and we're getting those from Lee's Rental, from Nantino, so I will speak with her too and she will see if she can come get those again.
That's a different company that we used last year. But yeah, we don't want us sitting around anyway, that's a great.
So Saturday you would be closed on Main Street from the beer tent to Railroad Street.
Yeah, I just seen it, okay, I gotcha.
What, how far up Second Street?
It would depend.
Would go to North Street?
Yeah, it would depend on the size of the obstacle courses and jump houses, I have to measure.
Are they gonna zip that up on Saturday?
Yes, on Saturday.
Also, it has to block off anyway, or, or, I'm sorry, I'm talking Friday.
Oh, Friday, it would depend on if we're having crafters and vendors, or if we're not, we haven't decided on that yet. So that would depend on how far down Second we go.
I think, I think on Friday we could probably have all of North Street wide open still. Unless the Legion had some big plan to do something.
Right, otherwise North would be open, it would just be Second.
So it'd be Second from Main to North.
Starting at, we don't know what time.
On Friday?
Yeah.
If it starts at five noon? I mean, depending on when we have, if we have crafters or if we have food vendors, that kind of thing, when they come in and set up.
All right, well, let's deal with the amplifier permit first, so we have the amplifier permit on Friday, the twenty-second and Saturday the twenty-third, Friday, five to ten thirty and Saturday from noon to ten thirty, that's the amplifier permit. Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Marivka, seconded by Trustee Bowden.
Marivka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
President Cross?
Yes. So the special event, uh, application for the street closure. Tentatively, we're talking Friday, closing Second Street from Main Street to North Street. That area, and North Street from Second Street to Railroad Street.
Friday?
Friday.
Friday, I don't think we'll have to close from North to Railroad. Just, just this, the block of Second Street from Main to North.
And between.
Starting noonish.
Yeah, depending on exactly how we have set it up, that street will pretty much be open until at least probably three thirty, four o'clock.
Just because we've got, you know, the, the hairdressers and, you know, the, the restaurant, so I mean.
Yeah, they'll be able to park on Main Street for the restaurants.
Okay.
We offered them rides last year for the hair salon, if any of that, um, older people that wanted to ride with a golf cart there. If they, if it was a little bit later in the day when they couldn't get in, um, so it'll be as comedy as possible and we'll let it be done.
And then Saturday?
Interrupt that at all.
Saturday, we're saying, starting at.
We, that would depend on the car show.
Well, a car show Main Street, what time the car show starts, so probably eleven?
A lot of those guys show up early.
Yeah.
Um, and then on Second, it would be, again, if we have crafters and vendors, they'll be in there at seven, eight.
I'd close them both from eight o'clock on, these guys will be showing up and.
Eight? Yeah, if we do, if we do eight, that's fine, I just try not to inconvenience you as much as possible.
Okay, so with those times, a motion?
Motion.
Second?
A second.
Motion by Trustee Jones, seconded by Trustee Marivka.
Jones?
Yes.
Marivka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
And President Cross?
Yes.
That it?
That it, thank you.
All right.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Item D, let's see, item C, resolution, a resolution approving a final plat subdivision for West Street Apartments resubdivision four fifty-one and four seventy-one Southwest Street with a final plat of subdivision. Mr. Borgo here.
Answering questions, I also have a landscaping plans.
Okay. So this is all, you know, coming out of the last meeting, uh, the board had given its approval or nod of approvals on this. Finalizing, uh.
The larger, please, I'd say. The larger one, I can see. I didn't bring enough for the, those.
Drew a drawing.
Pardon?
Drew it.
This is by Terrain Landscaping, I've done all my other buildings.
Terrain by, kind of, D R A N E or?
Yes. And it's all to scale, well, based on the original for the plant. And if you pay particular attention, you'll notice between the sidewalk on the west and the parking lot at the, um, Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, uh, one of the board members specifically required that I put screen type hedging. And that's included, uh, in that landscaping, just so you under, just so you know.
Those, those are twelve-foot arborita?
I don't think they're twelve foot, but they'll be tall, they'll be taller.
Did, did they name a specific height that those had to be at?
They didn't take, they just said as long as it's, you, you gotta, I don't know if you can buy it twelve foot tall, I think you probably have to buy them at maybe five or six foot tall and then they grow, I'm not a landscaper, I just did what they asked me to do. They just said, make sure that you have something that will provide a visual screening between the, the, the street and the west end of the parking lot, and that's what we've done.
I talked to Steve Maltice, who's on the Planning and Zoning, he was pretty specific on the height of those arborita and four-inch trees.
He didn't say, he just said nice size caliber, there was no specific discussion on height or anything like that, at least none of my records, I didn't see anything specific. They just said they wanted some screening, which we've provided, we've got several, two, a variety of two-inch trees and one-inch trees, if you want them, uh, a little bit larger, I can make that happen.
Can we double check that?
Yeah, yeah, we'll double check.
I've got no problems with the comedy, I just.
I wasn't there at the meeting, but he's, he mentioned, he said, just be sure that they're, and he did say specifically twelve-foot and four-inch trees.
I, I will, I will, I will never say that it didn't happen, but I had never heard of anything like buying pre twelve-foot tall, that's a really tall, and I don't, I don't even know if you can get that, I don't know. If that's what he said and if that's what's in your board requirements, I got no problems. And the other thing is that, um, I can't remember which one of you talked about, uh, linking up this sidewalk from my existing building, four seventy-one Southwest, a small, a, a small section of the sidewalk leading to, uh, toward the Park District. And we wanna look at that, and that's not a problem, that'll be, we'll make that four feet wide, it's only about eight to ten feet long, that's not an issue, it's a simple, simple thing, so, that'll be done.
Make sure you, it looked like there was a little culvert under that existing.
Well, we'll, we'll make sure that it's, it's, we'll either make sure that that one is fixed or I'll tear it out and put a new one in. I'm not gonna put a beautiful sidewalk over something that is gonna, over a piece of ugly culvert that's crushed from fifty years of use, we'll, we'll fix it.
One more question I had, um, discussing the water, that being law and everything, you had mentioned that the gutters were gonna go into a drainage system.
Right, and then it's hooked up to the.
Building to the north, you were gonna do that for them.
I offered, and she never accepted, so I can't make her do that, I offered it to her two times. That I would offer to, to trench it in, her gutters into my line, and she has not accepted that, so.
She's got time though to accept that?
If, if she, if, if she wants it, I'm more willing to do it.
My question is, I wouldn't be as worried about the runoff from the gutters as I would from the amount of water displacement from the size of the building and the parking lot.
But that won't go in her direction, that goes to my other building.
Yeah, I haven't, look, I didn't.
Yeah, my, the parking lot sheet flows, first of all, there's a, a, there's a large, uh, in my parking lot of this new proposed building, almost in the center of it is a, uh, a manhole, that we will put a, um, I can't, a grate over it so that the water can sheet flow into it and other parts of the parking lot sheet flow, uh, to the west to the storm sewer there. So none of that water in our parking lot even goes anywhere near it, it's going to my building that I already own, so.
My question is, that, um, basically you're guaranteeing that she's not gonna end up with water in her basement?
Oh, I can, first of all, I can guarantee God and whatever, whatever things that he's done.
Well, she hasn't had water.
I am, uh, what I am doing is trying to do everything in my power to prevent any issues. I have no ability to guarantee anything, but I'm trying to make sure, by, the thing that I'm doing is I'm not gonna be introducing any more water on that land between my building and her building than, than what's there already. Because actually, I'm gonna be taking water from that street, it will never touch the ground, it'll go right into a line and right out to the storm sewer, so I'm putting less water between us and what's there right now. But I, I, there's, there's no guarantees in engineering water, it's impossible, but I will do my darndest.
I mean, she has not had water issues and?
Like I said, I, she claims that, and I'm not saying, I'm, I'm just saying the offer is there to help and prevent as much as you can.
Questions? Any other discussion? Not, uh, we have resolution number, this would be, uh, so it'd be seventeen dash R twelve, a resolution approving a final plat of subdivision for West Street Apartments resubdivision four fifty-one and four seventy-one Southwest Street.
I'll motion it.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion by Trustee Marivka, seconded by Trustee Bowden.
Marivka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
And President Cross?
Yes. All right, and then we have ordinance, this would be ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-nine, an ordinance approving certain variations related to the construction of a seven-unit apartment building, four fifty-one and four seventy-one Southwest Street, and then we would also adopt the final act of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which are attached.
One question for Troy.
Yes.
So you'll still review all of these drawings and elevations and before permits are issued and before it gets, right?
We've already reviewed the site plan and consistent with what Mr. Borgo's saying, his property does sit lower than the property to the north. So like he said, there's no guarantees of water, but it, it appears that.
Typically doesn't run uphill.
It's not gonna run north, it should run around his building and get to West Street or get to the south into the storm sewer that he mentioned.
Okay, so you did get a chance to look at that since the last meeting?
Okay. And they will provide usually a foundation survey and a grading survey, and we review those as well.
I think we've already established, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, we've already established top of foundation, I believe, uh, with the original. So we'll be making sure that we hit that benchmark when we pour our walls, no doubt.
Okay, any concerns from your standpoint?
We will review it originally and it appears to be in compliance.
When you say should, that makes me nervous. I mean, if somebody was building something next to my house and says, this should work.
Well, you can see what, what water does, I mean, something could change, if something can get blocked, I mean.
Well, no, not, not count blockage or extenuating circumstances, but just a good rain, uh, you know, it's our, it's our job to protect the people that are here. That's my concern, I mean, I'm not gonna make life miserable for him, but by the same token, I don't wanna say, yeah, this is wonderful and the engineer says, eh, it should work.
Yeah, we keep having a hundred-year rainstorms, like every other year.
She ends up with two-foot water in the basements and flooded out, what's the, what's the correction or what's the fix?
Well, this project is using an existing storm sewer that's already runs along the property line, um, if we, if this was a brand-new development, there would be a different requirement with the size of the storm sewer to be more, um, conservative with larger rains, but just based on what, you know, what we've done with other apartments using existing storm sewer lines, it's what we've done with other buildings in the past.
Mr. Borgo, I appreciate everything you've invested in the town and all that and we're not trying to be difficult, but this was a toughie because.
I understand.
This is a tight lot for a big building.
I totally understand it, that's why I've been more than willing to negotiate and to provide, that's why I offered the neighbor to the north right at that meeting, I went right up to her, even though she was not happy with me, I made the offer right away. Because I'm not looking to create, I'm not looking to create bad neighbors, I wanna have good neighbors and I want to have good, I wanna have good violence and I want my neighbors to know that if there's a problem, they need to call me and I will rectify it. So, like I said, I'm just, I'm just trying to prevent her water from coming to my property and then blaming me because now her water's no longer running into my property. Cause basically my property now is being used as an impromptu, uh.
Detention pot.
Detention pot. So that's not my responsibility to collect all the sins of the world, but I take responsibility for trying to do the most humanly possible to prevent it, that's why I offered it to her. Cause I know, I'm very confident that my water's not gonna go to hers, I'm more worried about her water coming to me. And no one thought about that. Is she gonna, is she going to, is she going to make it right if my property gets flooded? She's uphill, just as legitimate, she's a property of nine or two, we both have rights.
And then I guess finally, just on the landscaping, um, please do a nice job on the landscaping, that's a, that's a major way into the downtown area. A lot of people coming up.
And everything, everything is still contingent on that being reviewed and approved, but we also need, I mean, on this plan, there's nothing from the person that generated it, could you get us his bona fides?
Oh, yeah, yeah, he's been landscaping.
But we just don't have it, so.
No, no, I can, that's another problem, I just wanted to.
The administrator.
I just wanted to make, yeah, I'll get you his phone number and email and mailing address, that's not an issue, I just wanted to make sure that you had in front of you tonight, an extensive plan that shows exactly what's gonna go there, the size, how much, where the mulch mats are gonna be, where the stones are gonna be.
That, we, you know, we're not gonna be able to review it tonight and.
No.
So pending review of that.
Right.
As we said previously.
Yeah.
Before any permits are issued.
Right, and I, like I said, I don't know if you need more than, that should be enough size for review, do you need another copy or are those two full-size copies good enough?
The two full-size copies are enough, but I'm, I am gonna be very honest with you. This is the third time I've asked for a landscaping plan.
It is a landscaping.
Time out though. And every other professional landscaping plan I've seen has been in color and explaining the trees, the sizes. There's some, there's some, but there's not, you know, the only size is the maple red trees, you know what I'm saying?
No, they're all sized, there's how many and sizes.
There's also the stamp of the guy that does the work on it.
You have one two-inch caliber maple, you have three pairs that are two-inch calibers, you have one huckleberry that's a two-inch caliber.
I got that.
These, you don't give calibers and sizes for shrubs and you don't do it for flowers.
But I, I get numbers.
Yes, there's numbers of how many.
Okay. And then where's his, where is his stamp, the guy that did it?
I can give you that information.
No, 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 I want him to stamp that.
Stamp it, what do you, what do you mean?
Landscape architect, he's got, he's got a stamp that he.
Oh, we've never, and I will tell you that my last two buildings that I've done, he did them and he does not, I don't even know if he's got a stamp.
Is he an architect?
Is he a landscape architect?
Yeah.
I have not a clue, we've never required it.
Okay, well, I'm just telling you this.
I mean, this is, this guy's done the last two buildings and it's never been asked up before.
I'm just telling you, that's what we asked for.
You just started asking for that?
No, we asked for it at the planning commission and we asked for it.
Well, you said you needed larger drawings and you needed sizes.
I said I give a landscape architect a variety of plans.
Okay, but that doesn't mean the same thing as being stamped, that's all I'm saying.
We will, we will review it and if we need further, we'll let you know.
That sounds good.
All right, so we have ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-nine and ordinance approving certain variations related to the construction of a seven-unit apartment building, four fifty-one and four seventy-one Southwest Street and adopting the planning and zoning findings of fact, is there a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Trustee Bowden, seconded by Trustee Marivka.
Bowden?
Yes.
Marivka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And President Cross?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, let me know what else you need, I do appreciate all of your, all your help and the negotiating and it's been a pleasure and I'm glad to be part of your town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will, are you bringing Mylars in, I believe you need Mylar, right, for the resubdivision, correct?
Yes.
Yes, we'll be bringing that in either tomorrow or the day after so that we can start getting signatures. And as soon as I get the blueprints, which I hope to be by the end of this week, we'll be in for building permits. So, we'll wanna move forward and take advantage of it while we can.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number two, an ordinance adding chapter one twenty-four donation boxes to title eleven business regulations of the Peatone Village Code regarding donation boxes.
Oh, the, uh, returning, uh, this is what Mike Mars presented last week, we just changed the numbers, uh, to increase the fine on the boxes, we recall these are the donation boxes that will hold in front of buildings and the permits.
And you restricted what they can put in?
And you restricted what they can put in, yes.
Yep, I was happy with it.
Everyone's good?
Yep.
So this would be ordinance number seventeen dash thirty, an ordinance adding chapter one twenty-four donation boxes to title eleven business regulations of the Peatone Village Code regarding donation boxes, motion?
I'll motion it.
I'll motion it, okay.
Motion by Trustee Bowden, seconded by Trustee Jones.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
President Cross?
Yes. Item E, proclamation, proclaiming April twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen as to celebrate Arbor Day, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind in the water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our village increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore, I, Stephen Cross, Mayor of the Village of Peatone, Illinois, do hereby proclaim April twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen as Arbor Day in the Village of Peatone, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Motion to accept the proclamation.
I'll motion it.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Moravka, seconded by Trustee Jones.
Moravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
And President Cross?
Yes. Item F, reorganize committees and appoint pro-tem's, I'm going to ask for a motion to table that until the next meeting.
Motion?
Second. Motion by Trustee Bowden, seconded by Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
President Cross?
Yes. Questions of the press? Correspondence, communications, petition?
Do we want to set a date for cleanup day? We talked about that.
We did, we did, and I'm trying to remember what we had talked about.
May seventeenth or something like that.
We didn't want to do it on the prom day.
Right, and that was, prom we decided was the twelfth?
Yeah, I think it's the day before Mother's Day, isn't it?
Yes, so I think we were looking at May the nineteenth, possibly.
Sounds right.
Yeah, prom's the twelfth.
So, and we'll, we'll put that on the next agenda, um, but we're looking at Community Cleanup Day, uh, we've done it the last few years, I think last year, we tried a little bit earlier, and the weather did not cooperate at all, um, so we're tentatively looking at Saturday, May the nineteenth, in the morning, but we'll set specific hours, I think, I think we said, like, we usually start at eight or nine.
Oh, it was eight or nine.
Yeah, it was eight or nine.
It was eight, the one year...
Yeah, so I would say, I would say let's go nine, yeah, nine's good, and, uh, usually runs about three hours or so, but we'll ask for volunteers from the community, and we'll reach out to, the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, those type of organizations, but we'll, we'll get some more details on that, but, yeah, we'll look at, uh, look at that date, anything else?
The only thing I would reemphasize is that we go back through the minutes and maybe even talk to some of those P and Z members to get a firm grip on the landscape, because they seem very emphatic.
I'll, I'll be honest with you, I don't remember that number being, but that doesn't mean anything.
They didn't throw out a height, they did throw out a caliber, uh, they said they wanted higher caliber tree that in, but there wasn't a specific height mentioned, I was, I was there too, there's no specific height, but it was a caliber which is also gonna control the heights to a certain...
Did they come up with a caliber number on the trees?
Well, they didn't, they said, sitting right next to me, I was sitting there, we don't want any small trees out there, and then they said, you know, two calibers, uh, you know, I, so it was not specific, but it was indicated to me that they were looking at something possibly in excess of two.
Yeah, and I apologize, the board, I don't mean to be anal about this, but this is just a blown-up one of the one he handed us two weeks ago.
Don't hold his feet to the fire and make him perform.
No, no, so let's, let's find out for sure, and...
Just so you know, that variance is subject to the approval of these, so, you're, we wrote the ordinance that way, right, on, on purpose.
Right, again, you get off fifty-seven, and you come into town, you go right by where his building is.
Right.
It doesn't look great now, and that's not his fault, but I think we got an opportunity to really enhance, one small step into enhancing people's first impression of Peatone, so,